University of Houston talks about the difference between fitting in and belonging. Quote, "Fitting in is about assessing the situation and becoming who you need to be in order to be accepted. Belonging, on the other hand, doesn't require us to change who we are. It requires us to be who we are." Unquote. She further breaks this down with a quote from a 12-year-old, "If I get to be me, I belong. If I have to be like you, it's fitting in." Allen et al. in their 2024 article titled "Adolescent School Belonging and Mental Health Outcomes in Young Adulthood" showed that, quote, "Higher levels of all aspects of school belonging were associated with lower mental health symptoms across young adulthood." Unquote. Further, they found that, quote, "The importance of adolescent school belonging and in particular school status and reference to feeling socially valued as a long-term protective factor that can mitigate against later depression, anxiety, and stress." Unquote. The Boys and Girls Club of America in their December of 2023 article, "Benefits of Diversity in the Workplace: What Youth and Parents Should Know," note that the diversity, equity, and inclusion programs in the workplace offer the following key benefits: A safe environment free from judgment, a fostering of innovation and creativity, demonstrates to youth what is possible, builds trust, increases collaboration, and decreases turnover. The article states that as youth enter the workforce, they are specifically local for companies that employ this sense of belonging through diversity, equity, and inclusion. By focusing on belonging and allowing kids to know that everyone is their own unique self with their own unique culture, we foster a healthy sense of mental well-being in community. We foster a future generation of adults who have the capacity to see others not as they see themselves but as unique individuals. I applaud this board for supporting safety and sense of belonging in their strategic plan. As our youth move through their journey of school and eventually to young adulthood, they deserve to have the support and encouragement to be who they are so that they can belong, decrease the chances of mental health challenges, and become a productive member of our community and society as a whole.
Thirty seconds. Ms. Burns, could I ask you a question real quick? As a mental health professional, you were here last month advocating for means and measures to advocate for students whose sexual preferences might be LGBTQ+ or have a gender identity issue.
Yes.
Within that realm, how would a board like ours develop an inclusive policy to shelter families who don't share those same values for their children?
That's not up to me, sir. I think that's up to the board and the superintendent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. All right. Next, we go to our board discussion. And first, we have our technology update by Andy Kleber.
Nice to be with you guys today. Couple things that Stacy had asked me to talk about today. One of them was our one-to-one Chromebook program that we have in the district. Basically, every student has a Chromebook at their disposal. At the elementary schools, we typically deal with the Chromebooks being on carts, 30 in a classroom. And at the middle school and at the high school, the students have the option of paying a fee and then having the Chromebook with them throughout the course to take back and forth to home. And in all of that, there's a lot of people that are involved in that process, the media center specialists, our secretaries, and of course, our technicians. And they do a fantastic job of keeping our one-to-one repair and fee collection process running smoothly. One of the other things that I'd like to talk about too is E-Rate. And I don't know if everyone on the board is familiar with what E-Rate is. The E-Rate program evolved from the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and falls under the gangs of the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC. And basically, the E-Rate program helps schools and libraries in the United States get affordable access to the Internet and other telecommunications services. So the program provides discounts on these services to eligible institutions and making it more affordable for us to connect to the Internet and gain access to educational resources. So some of the things that E-Rate is used for is to buy our network infrastructure, the switches and our network closets, the wireless access points that we have throughout our buildings, and also our connectivity back to the Internet, which is through our ISP meta. And how does E-Rate work at Miami'sburg City Schools? Each E-Rate eligible institution is assigned a reimbursement percentage based on the number of students who qualify for the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. Our reimbursement rate this year is 80%. So when we put out to bid, you know, projects that we're doing to replace our infrastructure, the E-Rate program will reimburse us 80% of that cost, which leaves us with the remaining 20% to pay for, which makes this a very crucial program for us in terms of supporting our district and all of our initiatives. So I didn't know if you guys were familiar with how that whole thing works. This year, some of the projects that we're doing with our E-Rate money, we're increasing our bandwidth to the Internet from 2 gigabytes to 5 gigabytes, which is a pretty sizable jump. And in our district, the network topology is the Internet connection comes into the middle school, and the middle school would be like the hub for our district. And then access to all the other buildings are through the middle school. So the main bandwidth that we have for the district is going to jump from 2 gigabytes to 5 gigabytes this summer. And we're also increasing the bandwidth between our middle school and our high school. The high school currently has a 1 gigabyte bandwidth back to the middle school, and that's going to be increased to 3. One of the reasons for that is the high school is one of our largest consumers of the bandwidth. So we're just trying to get out ahead of that and then allow us a little bit of room for growth. The rule in bandwidth is the more you provide, the more is taken. So we're hoping that we can go a couple years without having to upgrade for a while. All of our other buildings have a 1 gigabyte connection back to the middle school, which is, seems to be very sufficient right now for our smaller buildings. Among the upgrades that we're doing, we're upgrading all the infrastructure in our non-instructional buildings, Memorial, Transportation Department, our Maintenance Department, and our Tech and Student Services Building are all getting switch upgrades. And we're upgrading the core switches at our middle school, or at our high school to accommodate the new bandwidth that we're going to be bringing to it. Also, as part of the replacement cycle with our E-Rate funds, we are going to be replacing a lot of our wireless access points, which are coming to the end of their support. So we're rotating all of our older WAFs out and installing newer ones. The buildings most impacted by that will be Jane Chance, Mound, and the high school. So one of the things that was very refreshing coming to Miami'sburg was that the team had put in place a really good replacement cycle. And so they've had replacement cycles for the PCs, the projectors that they use in the classrooms, and our network infrastructure in place well before I got here three years ago. And some of our summer projects are going to reflect those replacement cycles. We're getting ready this summer to upgrade Kinder with the projectors. We've been moving towards laser projectors, which don't require a bulb and thus doesn't have the recurring cost of bulb replacement. And we're doing PC upgrades at the middle school for our office and classroom PCs, and we're replacing a lab in Room 115. And we're doing a lab upgrade at the high school as well. Other upgrades that are happening over the summer, we're doing some server and storage upgrades, and we will do our Chromebook purchase for incoming 6th and 9th grade students at the high school and middle school buildings. One of the things that I'm in charge of here is the tech coach meetings. We have tech coaches that represent each of our buildings that take resources back to our staff and help them to integrate technology into their curriculum. Our continuing focus is going to be on tools and resources that we make available to them. And one of our big focuses this year was the inclusion of AI as one of those tools and resources. So that's something that we're treading delicately because there's pros and cons of all the AI stuff, but there's a lot of pros to be had and a lot of time and efficiencies that can be found for our staff to use AI. And I know that's a lot of information. If one of the things I hope is, if you have questions or things that you'd like to see in the realm of technology, please feel free to let me know.
Are you responsible for the neat wiring of the network cabling in the school buildings?
Well, I'm not responsible for it totally because that was probably more Mark Laspe who was the prime person who got all of that in place.
Well, I have to tell you, when I did facilities tours with Ed and Steve, it was remarkable, the volume of wires, the complexity of the network, and it looked absolutely perfect. You could tell there was a lot of time and attention to detail taken with it and a lot of professionalism, which, you know, it's kind of neat to see somebody, you know, implement their craft and be able to see that high-quality standard. And I actually graduated high school with Mark.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. So I'll have to give him an ad lib by the next time I see him. I have two other questions for you.
Sure.
You know, as budget constraints face our district, you know, we're running into issues and can forecast we're going to be running into issues where there isn't going to be enough money at some point. If you take these replacement cycles and you expand them out to stretch the dollar, what kind of issues did the district face?
Well, it depends on how far out you need to stretch it. Now, like on some of our replacement cycles, like projectors, the laser projectors are new, and we really don't know how long they will last. I mean, they have a guess of, you know, so many hours, which is going to be much longer than a typical ball projector. So we may be able to extend, say, like the projectors out a little bit further to kind of slow, you know, keep it hurting in terms of finances to a minimum. PCs, it would be, it would be, it would be very hard to maintain proper infrastructure, especially network-wise, if we had to go an extended period of time because, for one reason, the ability to get support on the equipment runs out after a certain point. So we really don't want to go past the end of support because then you're really in a bad spot.
And that's, that's why I ask. I want to understand, you know, in delaying to allow budget dollars to be stretched, you know, I want to be cognizant when we're considering those kinds of decisions to not make your job harder because you're doing a great job and you deserve, deserve all the support and accolades for doing a dynamite job. The only other question I have for you that I wondered from a personal perspective is Student Technology Services is centered on Central Avenue, right?
Yeah, 928 Central.
Right. And when I, and when I look at that facility, I often wonder, you know, how is your presence being centralized outside of where the education process is a benefit to our district?
Honestly, I think the position in that building for us is, makes us very central for getting out to the other buildings. It's, I don't, I think maybe our longest trip is probably to Bauer, which is, you know, just 10, 15 minutes up the road. So positionally, I think we are very strategically placed to be able to fan out to whichever building we need to get to.
And the network hub is at the middle school, right?
It is.
Okay. Would there be any benefit to have you centered, have your center of operations at the middle school where the network hub exists?
Not, not really. I mean, remote management has come a long way.
Right.
So, you know, there's a lot that we can do remotely that doesn't require us to have a presence at the middle school.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kleber. Any other questions?
I do. And I, I know I always bring this up, but I'm concerned about the Chromebooks for children, students at the high school that are on Free and Reduced Lunch and perhaps could not afford to pay the fee for the Chromebook. So maybe Dr. Blessing is the one, or, I mean, how do we get Chromebooks in their hands so they can take them home?
We have a fee waiver.
There's a fee, okay. I kind of thought that's what it was.
Okay, so they have a fee waiver, just like, okay, for us, okay, great, awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
And next we have our student rep, Andrew Prince, talking about the books credit that he's been working on with other student board reps from Miami'sburg, Valley View, West Carrollton, Centerville, and North Lawn.
So unfortunately, none of the other student reps could be here tonight, so, yeah. So like Mrs. Neese said, and thanks to Mrs. Gettler, we were able to, as Miami'sburg student reps, we were able to join the roundtable, which consists of those schools where we get to work with other peers and other students that sit on their Board of Education for their respective districts as well. So as, we're all still growing with the whole process, and we're still learning things, but as I have gathered information on it, I believe the roundtable does a really big project every year. And so this year, we decided as a group to target the Physical Education Flex Credit program. So essentially, what a Flex Credit is in general is it allows students to partake in educational opportunities and experiences outside of school hours. And so as we've decided to target physical education specifically, this goes for all students who partake in sports that aren't school sanctioned. So as we met with the roundtable, I think back in February or March, they all sent us out on a journey to collect statistics for what our student body thought of the idea. And I have them pulled up here, and I'm going to summarize it a little bit. I think the biggest thing we asked was if school sanctioned sports were a thing, would you use a PE Flex Credit? And we had an overwhelming majority, 95% said they would. And our last question on the survey was, as we have school sanctioned and non-school sanctioned sports, should we allow sports like soccer, let's say Miami'sburg has a good soccer program, but not all soccer players in Miami'sburg play that sanctioned sport, should we allow that sport, club, soccer team player to still get the credit? It was, we all, student body wanted it. So right now, from what, at least we, from Miami'sburg have gathered, we're going to address the roundtable in incorporating every sport. So the reason that we decided to target the Flex Credit for physical education is there are some schools at the roundtable, I think Valley View, they don't even have that opportunity. So those students who do dance or do swimming or rowing, they don't get the opportunity to get that physical education credit out of the way, so they have to take up times in their schedule to take a PE class. And I know, like, for me, I want to overload my schedule as much as possible. So, let me see, I wrote some notes down. Oh, yeah, I was going to comment on Miami'sburg. Miami'sburg, as I am getting better and more equipped to sit here on the board, I've learned just how much Miami'sburg City Schools offers amazing programs and experiences and assistance for students to get to their education, I lost the word, goals, there we are. And so Miami'sburg actually offers a good PE Flex Credit. However, it's a little tedious in the workload. You do have to say you're going to do it the semester before, and there's 60 hours of documented physical education activities and a few assignments and assessments here and there. So we're just trying to make this PE Flex Credit more mainstream and easier for student athletes to balance their athletics and academics. Maddie McGowan, she sits over there usually, she wanted me to say some words for her today. She said, "I wanted to say that while I'm not directly involved with the Flex Credit, I'm very glad that Miami'sburg has it as an option. It was very exciting and informative to hear from the other students whose schools don't have the option for the Flex Credit. I was very pleased to see that there was a draft of this club sports legislation." Yeah, so, and Mrs. Neese, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure some local representatives endorse our ideas to take to state legislation, which is extremely For me, seeing this really put what the student board reps and advisors can do to help the respective districts, I can't wait to work with the student board reps and advisors again soon. And to finish this off, and I can confidently say for the three other board reps and of the other students on the roundtable, we are all very excited to be a part of this group and to witness the future advancements of this project.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Very exciting. I did make, I, I know that I had Donald Culp, he did want to introduce himself, and I'm so sorry, I forgot that. He doesn't want to speak. He just wanted to come and introduce himself. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Okay. We're backtracking a little bit.
So my name is Don Culp. I'm a Miami Township trustee. The most important thing about me is I'm Steve Holman's neighbor. So if you like Steve, that helped me get ahead already. I'm here tonight to, I promised myself for seven years probably to come down and sit in a board meeting. I'm happy to be here tonight, finally. And I invited some of my fellow elected officials to come with me. Bob Matthews is the new Miami Township fiscal officer. I'll have to look at my notes, so I remember all the names. And Nate Monday is on the West Carrollton School Board. So I don't know if you're familiar with the West Carrollton District. Rick Dodson left early. I think he's with West Carrollton City Council, right? Keith, Keith Nohrself is with the council, is it West Carrollton City Council?
School Board.
School Board, okay. Thank you. And John Gomez is here, I think. He's with Treasure Sprags Office. So I'm just happy to be here and watch the meeting. And Nyla, I stood with your husband for four hours on Election Day, I think, or maybe longer. It was a pleasure meeting him during that, during that period. And it sounds like a boring thing to stand at the polls, but I'll tell you what, you get to know somebody after you're out there for a while. Dr. Blessing, I hope we see each other again at the, at the award ceremony here on May 6th. I don't know if you're in attendance at that, but I'll be there promoting my French love of the French language, so I'll be happy to see you there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the approval of the 2024-25 School Calendar. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education adopt the 24-25 School Year Calendar Revision. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, Dr. Blessing?
Sure. And Mrs. Moore, I think sent the board some notes. We had Election Day last November, and we had, of course, our voting, our high school voting issues for the elections, and it's very hard to have school and the elections. It can pose some safety issues. So we don't have school for the students. Last year, we had a personalized learning day. It was, it was easier, I think, for some of the elementary students. High school, middle school didn't go over as well, so we're just going to have a no-student day and then a staff work day for that, just some of the feedback we received. And then we are adding, we are asking to add, excuse me, four two-hour release early, later arrivals for the high school so that the teachers and staff can look at data and help make some decisions for students. They don't have any time during their day. Like, the middle school and the elementary have some teacher time, but the high school doesn't. So, and Mr. Holman can talk a little bit more about what that would look like for bus routes, if he wants to share that.
Yeah, it would just be put on at the end of the elementary. So the drivers pick their routes at the start of the year. These four days, their start times are different in terms of that.
And it doesn't affect our overall, school's attendance is based on hours. So the high school has plenty of hours to meet the state minimum.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
No. When I talked with Stacy, I fully support that. I think the teachers having collaboration four times a year, at least a couple hours to go over things, whether it's curriculum, whether it's giving students things that they may need, at whatever level, I think is a benefit. I think the day off for the kids on Election Day, especially at the high school, it is what it is. Just let them have the day off. We go by hours anyhow, so we're well within that range. So I'm fully, fully supportive of that.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the community understands, we don't have a choice whether they're going to use our school.
Is that correct, Dr.? Yes, it is. Yes.
We don't have a choice. They tell us that they're going to use the school, and so we have to let them.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the 24-25 School Calendar Revision.
A second. First by Mr. Amsler and a second by Mrs. Gettler. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gettler.
Yes.
Mr. Mallory.
Yes.
Mrs. Neese.
Yes.
Mr. Amsler.
Yes.
Mr. Daffler.
Yes.
Next, we have our consent agenda. A, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student Melissa Katchemeister, did I pronounce that right? Katchemeister.
Katchemeister.
Okay. MHS, Destination Imagination, Kansas City, Missouri. Next, we have B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state overnight travel. Melissa Katchemeister, MHS, Destination Imagination, Kansas City, Missouri. Next, we have C, Michael Black, principal of Miami'sburg High School, has recommend Outstair Schelmeyer, Kaden Shores, Tanner Turner, Kayvon Wilson, and Zane Wright for early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. Then we have D, recommended action, Becca Bennett, Laura Blessing, Dinette Chance, Elise Hafenbrack, Lee Heronimus, Kathy Sperry, and Stacy Moore review the mini grant proposals for the 24-25 school year. The attached list of projects is recommended for approval for joint funding with the Board of Education and the Miami'sburg Schools Education Foundation. Next, we have E, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the use and purchase of the following instructional materials. Then we have F, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve consent items A through E. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve consent items A through E.
A second, please.
Second.
We have a first by Mrs. Gettler and a second by Mr. Amsler.
I have a couple concerns that I'd like to offer for discussion if I can be recognized, Mrs. Neese. Thank you. You know, I'd like to take a minute to clarify something that became evident to me earlier this evening is, you know, we have policies that govern our operations as a district. And I can appreciate that although, you know, you can advocate or to allow somebody to speak, the policy exists that says they can't. And I can appreciate everybody following that. But we also have other policies. And policy BDDC says the agenda, together with supporting materials, is distributed to board members at least 48 hours prior to the board meeting to permit them to give items of business careful consideration. Now, that being said, I'd like to take a minute and clarify something that is critically important to have on the record this meeting, this evening, rather. We all sit here today as elected officials who have an oversight burden for the district on behalf of the taxpayers who voted for us to sit here for that very reason, on their behalf. By a show of hands, how many board members were provided with the digital and print access versions of the instructional material that is outlined within public, within Agenda Item 6?
Jason, I'm not doing a vote.
Me neither.
I'm not asking you to.
No. You just said...
But you just said, "with a show of hands."
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
I'm trying to understand if it's been vetted by board, because I've asked to receive it and I have not gotten access to it.
So, are you asking about the textbook title information that we are going to teach in regards to the 6th grade all the way up to World Religions, American Songbook, all that stuff? Is that what you're referencing?
Yes, that's what we're being asked to approve.
Yeah, and some of it is already in, that was approved last year.
That doesn't have anything to do with this year, they wouldn't be seeking our approval again.
Because some of it has to be approved each year when you go, these are the course of studies that are going to be approved based on kids signing up for different things. So, for me to sit here and micromanage every course textbook that we have, I'm not going to do. I have two curriculum directors. I have to have the confidence and the trust in them that they put forth, plus, we also have committees, we have teachers that vet the information. So, when I get the recommendation, I haven't heard of the stuff that is in here, and I know what's one of them, I think that you're referencing, that's already been approved a year ago.
I'm not referencing any of them, I'm not familiar with any of them.
Okay, well, I'll belay my last on that then. But the textbook title information, I don't have a problem with, because I believe that it's been reviewed and processed through our curriculum directors, or otherwise it wouldn't be here. I haven't heard anything from any teacher at any level that says, "Hey, you're going to approve something." I haven't personally. Now, there's been a couple to the board, yes, at the 11th hour today that I received. I'm just telling you what I'm doing, I don't have a problem with this.
I appreciate that, but I think you have to understand that there are different perspectives.
I'm not going to sit here and micromanage everything, Jason. I'm not going to do it.
I'm not asking you to.
Could I make a comment, please?
Yes. Renee.
Mrs. Moore is the curriculum director, people don't know who she is, for the high school, and she works with our teachers, that's how this curriculum was developed and the materials also chosen. So, they worked together over several months to develop appropriate offerings for our high school students. This is their area of education and also their specialization, just like I have a specialization in my field of study, they also have a specialization, and I respect that. So, they follow the Ohio Learning Standards for Social Studies that includes civic literacy, financial and economic literacy, and global awareness. So, it's recommended that the Ohio Model Curriculum includes American History, American Government, Modern World History, World Geography, Economic and Financial Literacy, and Contemporary World Issues. All of the classes that have been chosen for our students for 7th, 6th grade through high school follow the Model Curriculum standards for the state of Ohio. So, to me, I feel very confident in what was chosen by people who have the education and specialization in social studies.
Can I have a comment, please?
Yes.
So, I'm not here to question the professionalism of the people that reviewed the curriculum. They are extremely qualified, I'm sure of this, to make the decision on the studies that are, that we're talking about. I'm not questioning any of that. But there was time, there was a board member that asked for time to review this. This has never been done in Myamisburg City School Board, I guarantee you. There's not a board member that's ever asked that. This isn't, it doesn't make it a wrong ask. There's no intent to harm students or allow proper time to schedule training for the new material. This is just, just a different way of thinking that should be treated fairly with equity and inclusion.
I'd like to clarify a couple of things to everybody. I'm not seeking out a struggle. Being new to the world of education, I have to reaffirm, I don't want to micromanage this neither. However, I believe that we have a separate oversight authority to represent voters in the community that put us in these chairs to vet this material on their behalf, separate from the teachers in the teachers' union. And today, I met with Jordan Adams from Vermillion Education. His firm specializes in doing independent review for boards to guarantee their affordable services, and his curriculum audits often are done remotely with digital logins and passwords provided by the school districts. And, you know, so I'm not suggesting that we dive down a rabbit hole that none of us have the time professionally to do, but I want to explain to you what brought me here. This is curriculum that was recently removed from the district. It was 4th grade social studies curriculum. I was interested in it because it was scheduled to be removed as part of the grade band even. I was interested to see how we were teaching the Bill of Rights, the U.S. Constitution, and so on and so forth, and American Government. When I read through it, in the preface, it says, "Pay attention to the words, but also look at the pictures and features. This book is packed with eye-catching visuals that give you tons of additional information if you only pay attention to them." So, when, then when I start to look at it, and I see a huge picture of a police officer leading a German Shepherd through a school district sniffing lockers with all the curriculum content in small print. Now, this was being put in front of a nine-year-old 4th grader. And then I turn the page again, and there's someone being arrested by the state police. And then I turn the page again, it's an anti-death penalty protest saying, "Fried fish, not people." And I'm not going to go on, but I could. So, when I see this, and I ask in February for digital access to look at the back end of the social studies curriculum that replaced this, I still have not been provided with that. And I believe this serves as an example based on proof that I have a bona fide duty to speak up on behalf of the people that elected me to sit in this seat and keep these things out of the board. With that, I would like to motion this be tabled until the board has been given time to review the material. According to BD, the BDCC, it says, "The agenda together with supporting materials." Supporting materials have not been provided for us to approve this, and if we're going to keep people from speaking who take the time out of their lives to come and address this board, we need to be consistent and enforce the rules uniformly.
Do I have a second for that motion? And we're going to just vote on our items A through E. All right. Mr. Mallory?
No.
I'm sorry, Steve.
That's okay.
I thought you were supposed to do that.
No, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Mallory?
No.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
I abstain.
Mrs. Gatter?
Yes.
All right. Next, we move on to our Human Resources Agenda Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Myamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI Criminal Record Check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Then B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, supplemental, second, certificated, classified. And the same verbiage. Then C, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve Human Resource Items A and B. Do I have a motion? Okay, does anybody want to, Mr., someone do you want to speak? I know, it tells us all the new changes for the grade band being and...
Yeah, it's normal monthly business.
It was a long list.
It's very long list.
Because everybody, people are changing their schools.
Yeah. All right. So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve Human Resources Items A and B.
I'll second.
Okay, so, first by Mrs. Gatter, and a second by Mr. Mallory. All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatter?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
All right, next we move on to agreements and contracts. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following agreements and contracts as presented. L.E.P.I. Enterprises Incorporated...
That replaced this, I still have not been provided with that. And I believe this serves as an example based on proof that I have a bona fide duty to speak up on behalf of the people that elected me to sit in this seat and keep these things out of the board. With that, I would like to motion this be tabled until the board has been given time to review the material. According to BD, the BDCC, it says, "The agenda together with supporting materials." Supporting materials have not been provided for us to approve this, and if we're going to keep people from speaking who take the time out of their lives to come and address this board, we need to be consistent and enforce the rules uniformly.
Do I have a second for that motion? And we're going to just vote on our items A through E. All right. Mr. Mallory?
No.
I'm sorry, Steve.
That's okay.
I thought you were supposed to do that.
No, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Mallory?
No.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
I abstain.
Mrs. Gatter?
Yes.
All right. Next, we move on to our Human Resources Agenda Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Myamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI Criminal Record Check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Then B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, supplemental, second, certificated, classified. And the same verbiage. Then C, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve Human Resource Items A and B. Do I have a motion? Okay, does anybody want to, Mr., someone do you want to speak? I know, it tells us all the new changes for the grade band being and...
Yeah, it's normal monthly business.
It was a long list.
It's very long list.
Because everybody, people are changing their schools.
Yeah. All right. So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve Human Resources Items A and B.
I'll second.
Okay, so, first by Mrs. Gatter, and a second by Mr. Mallory. All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatter?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
All right, next we move on to agreements and contracts. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following agreements and contracts as presented. L.E.P.I. Enterprises Incorporated, the Mark Twain crawl space project, $31,783. Mobile Health Services LLC. Resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Myamisburg City School District declares and determines that due to an Ohio Department of Education requirement that all staff responsible for driving school-aged children must have an annual T8 physical for the 24-25 school year, therefore authorizes Mobile Health LLC to perform said T8 physicals for all CDL and van-certified staff. Mobile Health LLC will invoice the district at a cost determined prior to May 1st. Sedwick, $2,505. Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council Electric Service Resolution. Warren County ESC Speech Bishop Life Hold Auxiliary Funds, $22,915. Warren County ESC Service Quote Fiscal Year 2025, $1,928,036. Do you want to talk about any of that?
Yeah, I can do several of them on here. The lead by Enterprise, as you know, we had the pipes under Mark Twain bust over during the winter time, and so we've had to repair those, redone with that. It's a wet crawl space, so in order to repair that, to put the vapor barrier up, keep odor out, keep it dry, that's what this is for. There was not a vapor barrier due to the age of the building.
When was Mark Twain built?
Oh, gosh. 50s.
So, it's existed with the same dirt crawl spaces there now for 80 years. Okay, yeah.
So, that will get the vapor barrier under there. To prevent that, we did all the air quality control checks throughout the building, did the mold testing, and it all came back better than what is, what they consider normal, so that was...
Better than normal?
Better than normal. We were above.
So, what are we just spending the money for if we're better than normal with our testing?
Because there's an odor. There's an odor that's been there every year.
For 80 years.
Yeah, and the odor's getting worse down through the gates. Then, Mobile Health Services, that's State of Ohio requires bus drivers and van drivers that, they have to have their T8 physicals done every year, and the board has to approve the company that does that. That's what that is for on there. Sedwick, that is for us to participate in their workers' comp program. They manage our workers' comp for that. And then the Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council Resolution, that allows us to purchase electric as a whole, which just says, "Must quite a bit of money each year," is part of that constitution.
Do I have a motion?
Can I ask you a question? Is it perfect, Steve, that just aside?
Go ahead, I want to go ahead and do the motion, and then you can ask a question.
I'm in for agreements and contracts. Second.
First by Corey Daffler, second by Mr. Amsler.
Mr. Holman, since you were all things financial tonight, since Mr. Blessings isn't here, I have a question for you, and you would understand this, being that I'm trying to understand the rules, and it says we're supposed to receive supporting materials and information we're voting on at least 40 hours, 48 hours prior to the meeting. I received the details to this $1.9 million contract, the ESC, yesterday, and the details associated with it today at 12:20. Is it still appropriate that we vote on it tonight, being that it's not, that the quote is valid until the 1st of June? These are services that require, are special ed services that we cannot provide in the district? These are on students' IEPs. I understand, I'm just trying to make sure we follow the rules consistently that are established. I'm just wondering if there's any reason why we should not in this case. I work for the pleasure of the board. Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go on to roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatter?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
All right, now we move on to our financial agenda items. Approval of transfers and school fees waived. The Treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following transfers. These transfers are for school fees waived during January, March 2024. All transfers are made in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, 500... All transfers are made in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code five seven oh five one four. So we're moving all from the general fund, Uniform Supply, School Supplies Bauer, five hundred and seventy dollars. Uniform School Supplies Bear, two hundred and seventy. Uniform School Supplies Kinder, one thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Uniform School Supplies Jane Chance, nine hundred dollars. Uniform School Supplies Mark Twain, two ten. Uniform School Supplies Mound, three hundred and sixty dollars. Uniform School Supplies Medlar, three hundred and sixty dollars. Uniform School Supplies at Myamisburg Middle School, one thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Uniform School Supplies High School, four thousand three hundred and five dollars. Class fees, high school, twenty-two dollars. Class fees, high school, eighteen dollars. Class fees, high school, thirty-six dollars. Class fees, high school, twenty-four dollars, for a total of nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And then B. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve then and now invoices as presented. C, it is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the following purchase orders as presented. I D F, B, grant funds, Dayton Christian W C E S C Services, eighty-seven thousand dollars. Mark Twain Vapor Barrier, thirty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Tech High School P C, thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Curriculum, Great Mind PVC, thirty thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. Middle School P C, one hundred and forty-one dollars, six hundred, one hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Okay. And then D. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. Then E, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve financial items A through D. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval items of finance, uh, financial items A through D.
Second.
First by Mr. Daffler, second by Mrs. Getter. Our treasurer's not here tonight. Dr. Blessing or Mr. Humman, do you want to speak to that?
I think the contracts being mentioned in the.
In the previous section. Yeah.
Are all these preparations coming out of budgeted funds?
Yes.
Okay, so none of these represent something that wasn't accounted for for the unit? Thank you.
All right, roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Hamslar?
Yes.
Next we have acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero one eight eight account unless indicated otherwise. Two thousand dollars from the Myamisburg Ohio Eagles Aerie two three oh six to the Myamisburg High School Band, one thousand dollars, and Myamisburg City Schools Information Technologies, one thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars from Myamisburg Rotary Club to Myamisburg City Schools Community Connections, one thousand five hundred dollars, and Destination Imagination, five hundred dollars. One thousand five hundred dollars from the Myamisburg Visual Ensemble Booster Association, D B A, Myamisburg Winter Color Guard to Myamisburg City Schools for Myamisburg Winter Color Guard Psyching. Books and supplies valued at one thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars from the Mount Elementary School P T A to the Mount Elementary School Library. Do I have a motion to accept those donations?
I'll motion to accept the donations.
Second.
Yeah, first by Mr. Mallory and second by Mrs. Getter. Thanks so much for all of the donations. They're truly the icing on the cake for our staff and students. Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Hamslar?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
All right, now we're to our report section, and we're going to start out with our M V C T C board member, Molly Williams.
Good evening. The meeting was called to order on April the ninth at seven o'clock with roll call, approval of minutes, and the Treasurer's report. The ending cash balance as of March was sixty-one million, five fifty-three, three forty-four, and forty-nine cents. And I have included our financial report within these minutes that I can turn in. The applications for M V C T C continue to be accepted for the class of twenty twenty-six. They have received eighteen hundred and two applications for that school year for twenty-four, twenty-five, and students have started receiving their application notifications that they have been accepted. There is a second choice process, so if they change their mind, or they're moving, or something happens, then other students are contacted to fill those spots, and they won't go unused if something changes their mind or moves. The top five most requested programs are number one, cosmetology, number two, pre-nursing, number three, welding, number four, vet science, and number five, dental assisting. The top five school districts represented by these total applications are number one is Northmont, number two is Huber Heights, number three is Myamisburg, number four is Vanalia Butler, and number five is Parkville. We get lots of emails now with different information and stuff, and one of them is just about the Ohio schools and boards and everything. And one of them that I read said the Governor DeWine has given the state of the state the week of April the eighth, and he emphasized Ohio children and their futures. He mentioned career planning for the state's high school graduation requirements and expanding the funding for career tech education to ensure students who want that opportunity so they can be involved, which I thought was great because it parallels with what Myamisburg Schools is already doing, and it's great that we are a satellite program. Myamisburg students are continuing to receive lots of opportunities from Miami Valley C T C, even if they don't go there physically. And we are getting two new programs. One is retail agricultural services, and the other is veterinary science. So that's pretty exciting that they're getting those. It was really cold, this is my first year, and I got to attend the National Tech Honor Society on Sunday, March twenty-fourth, and I was so impressed with the entire process and ceremony. They had a hundred and forty-one students inducted into their national society. Thirteen, thirteen of them were from Myamisburg, and I did take pictures of my phone, and if anybody wants those, I was like, yay! They're like some weird lady saying. The foundation for Miami Valley C T C actually gives each recipient a five hundred dollar scholarship to be used for future education, which I thought was amazing, and they do this every year. And that money comes, a lot of it from their staff and their personnel. So that shows the dedication of the staff up there. They held their prom on April the sixth, and there was around eight hundred and ninety-nine students in attendance for the theme A Night in Paradise. It was held in their Mac Center, and it was very well received, and they want pictures on their website of it. Important dates coming up, I really want to stress these to you guys. The one that's coolest is they are having their building dedication on May the tenth at four P M., and then a general open house for everybody who wants to go up and see the facility from five to, I believe, seven or eight. The next one is their staff recognition at eleven o'clock on Friday, May seventeenth. Their senior recognition ceremony, which is their graduation, and it's at six thirty at U D on the same day, May seventeenth. And then adult education graduation is Thursday, May the twenty-third, and I plan on attending all of those.
Molly, I'm just curious, I'm trying to enter this in my phone, because the last two times you've told us about these dates, I haven't.
Okay.
What was the date that the tour was? Because that facility looks awesome, and I really want to try to get up there and check it out.
Where tennis is, because it's, it's huge. But it is May the tenth, and it, ceremony itself starts at four P M., and then it opens in Republic for the rest. I think it starts at five and it goes to place seven, I think, so.
So you can't get there until six, you could get there late, and just wanted to do the facility for how?
I would think so, yeah.
Four to seven maybe? Thank you.
Sure. On their agenda, they had one employee retire, and the board approved the hiring of forty people for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and one full-time and one substitute staff people. They're currently in negotiations with the Education Association. The second meeting was on April the eleventh, and we had not heard anything about that. But the first one, both sides agreed to the language, the titles, the new dates, and it was generally a housekeeping meeting. An update will be provided for you at the next board meeting. The superintendent did say that the meeting went extremely well, and everybody has worked well together in the past, and they don't foresee any problems, but I'll have a complete report for you next time. They are keeping an eye on the proposed bill H B four forty-five, and they said for us to just report that to you, and we did, everybody's watching it, apparently. The next one is kind of exciting, it's the Skills USA Southwest Regional Competition. It's our state levels, so we have had thirteen students move through the process, and they're now performing at the regionals in order to go to state. So they approved travel for, there's two students from Myamisburg that are in for state competitions, and the board has approved up to twenty-three students to travel to Atlanta for the National Conference Competition in June. And when they hear response of what happened at state, which hasn't occurred yet, I don't know who gets to go and what's going on. One student at Miami Valley C T C was awarded the Amazon Box. It's a forty thousand dollar scholarship, and it's school funding for future Amazon engineers is the premise of. And they literally do a video and they send the box via Amazon to a student in school, and they have a big presentation to them. So the student that won it, she is actually going to go to U D to become an engineer. So it's pretty amazing that they're picking these students from the school. The last topic is kind of an odd one, it just came up this week, and I, I want you to be aware. There's a news article that you might hear about, about Miami Valley C T C, and I also put the letter from the superintendent in this packet so you guys would have a record of it. But there was a student that was suspended for eating a bag of chips in a classroom. It sounds straightforward and very silly, but there are always more signs than more to a story. The teacher in question has a very severe allergy to corn products, and the students are made aware of this issue, and signs are posted in the area. Students and parents have made a signed agreement at the beginning of the year that they will not bring corn products into this area because she is deathly allergic, I mean, she could die. The parent contacted the news and put several comments on social media that her daughter was suspended for this. And the Miami Valley C T C has issued a statement in defense of the teacher and her safety in the Americans with a Disability Act, and I do have his letter here and the statement from them. So they were really afraid that the news, W H I O, was just going to say, she ate a bag of chips. Well, she put somebody in danger. So there were two sides, and I just wanted you to be aware of that. So if you do have any questions, I can have a follow-up or find out any more information that you need. But that's pretty much it, they're wrapping up the year, there's a lot of events going on, it's pretty exciting. I, I brought with me, this is the National Technical Honor Society announcement for them, and then this, if anybody is interested in looking, this is a brochure for the class of twenty twenty-six. It tells what is available at C T C, so if anybody can look at that. And again, we have, I have their financials and the letter. Do you have any questions for me? I highly recommend you go and take the tour because it's amazing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just as a comment, my niece is graduating from M V C T C this year. And veterinary, my, my family, my sister could not be happier. She's going to go to the University of Penn Valley and pursue a career in the veterinary services, so.
Good for her.
They have been nothing but happy, and I'm really looking forward to touring the facility.
Yes, yes.
All right, next we have, um, thank you, um, our legislature's favor, Rayson, Mr. Mallory.
Thank you, Mrs. Nice. Just a brief update, the House was back in session, and there was some, some activity. Just to revisit House Bill sixty-eight, the Saving Ohio, Ohio Adolescents from a Compromatation Act will become law in about, what, eight days, which is April the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. State Representative Young called me this afternoon, he was speaking kind of quickly as he was headed into a meeting, so I did my best to take some notes, but I promised next month I will follow up on this. He mentioned a college credit plus bill, and mentioned that there is about four hundred and eighty-five changes coming to that that I will promise to track and offer a more thorough report next month. House Bill one eighty-three, which is the restroom locker room bill, was voted out of committee and is waiting to be called for a vote on the House Representatives' floor. The Senate's version of the C C P bill is Senate Bill one oh four, which that's in the House Workforce Committee, and those details are a version as well. There's a new piece of legislation that was actually sponsored by District Thirty-seven Rep. Tom Young, our, our state representative, as well as District Thirty-nine Rep. Phil Plummer, who both represent our district. They were co-sponsors on a bill, on House Bill four eighty-five, that aims to curb the dangers of cell phone and social media impacts to kids while they're in school. The purpose is to revise the Ohio Revised Code, to create internet safety and some policy, to offer some guidance and restraint to empower schools to kind of combat the disruptions that we all know cell phones can be, even in our own life. Rep. Young did tell me that, you know, the dangers within Snip, uh, Snip to, excuse me, TikTok, Snapchat, and other social media, they're tracking those dangers, they're aware of them, they're doing their best to combat them as best they can. I know me and Mrs. Nice was in a Behavioral Matrix meeting at the high school this week, and, you know, we discussed, it seemed that in that meeting that cell phones came up a lot. And it's a tough thing because you can only put so many controls on them, and kids are clever. They can figure out workarounds and sneak to do those things in different ways, although it'll be challenging, it's a step in right, the right direction to acknowledge the dangers and start to combat them. Representative Young did emphasize one area of this, and, and I can appreciate this very much, that this would be a nightmare for teachers to have to be the enforcement arm of, and that he reiterated to me that the, the goal in this legislation is to empower Boards of Education and administrative staff to develop the policy and controls to deal with this and not dump another heavy load on a teacher that's trying to focus on education. That's all I got.
Mr. Hamslar, did you have any other, yeah, your other condition for student achievement? Okay.
Besides Mount Elementary School kindergarten student Braxton Miller, we also have Bauer Elementary School, Sophia Gomes. Bear Elementary School, Savannah Terry. Jane Chance Elementary School, Brandon Cox. Kinder Elementary School, Dylan Sweeterman. Mark Twain Elementary School, Eliza Fisher. Member View Elementary School, Marcus Ikorn. Myamisburg Middle School, Noah Miracle, and Myamisburg High School, Teddy Trup. As all representatives of the students of the month, so congratulations to all of them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamslar. Next we have our Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition, Rayson, and Getter.
We didn't have a meeting this month, but we will be meeting live in May.
Thank you. Next we have our district news and information from Mr. Daffler.
The latest making a difference, honorees from Mark Twain Elementary, uh, what is his name? Our Mark Twain Elementary School Administrative Assistant, Carla Jones. Mark Twain teacher, Megan Cole, and Myamisburg Middle School teacher, Stephanie Osborne. Carla was nominated by teacher Jennifer Damon and Patty Demott. They said Carla is a nurturer and has the ability to balance the tyranny of. They said Carla is a nurturer and has the ability to balance the tyranny of the urgent daily task with listening, with a listening ear and a gentle smile. She's the kind spirit that works behind the scenes to efficiently complete clerical tasks. She maintains detailed records and always supports staff to see that everyone has the tools to function seamlessly. Mark Twain Teacher, Megan Cole, was nominated by Jennifer Schaumburg. Jimmy said Megan goes the extra mile in everything she does. She is loved by all the students and a friend to all the members of Mark Twain's staff. She is truly one of a kind, and one of the main reasons it is always better to be a Viking. Also recently honored was Myhamsburg Middle School Teacher, Stephanie Osborne. Stephanie was nominated by Jennifer Pressle and Myhamsburg Middle School Team Eight Teachers, Maggie Critchfield, Mary Ankrum, Louis Wiskowski, and Kevin Osborne, who said this year Stephanie moved out of E L A and to teach social studies on Team Seven, even though she moved content areas. She spent her own time redeveloping two seventh-grade E L, E L A department units by having students hook and all focus on essential questions during lessons. Also, as before, she has continued to provide support, advice, and revision to lessons, all while finding any question that arises from E L A teachers on our floor. Stephanie is a tremendous asset to our school, no matter what subject she teaches, and we are very blessed to work with her. The nominations can be right here on the board docs at the district website.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Daffler. Next, we'll get our roundtable comments and, boy, our student board draft, the interview to start out.
Um, I don't have much to say, say regarding any topics discussed today. I would just like to thank all of the donations, as usual, as they enable us to do and enable us to get and provide things for our student body, and I think it's great.
So how many?
So we have end of the year, season's wrapping up in sports and our fine arts, so it's always a, a fast-paced time of the year, but I do want to start some congratulations to all of our sports teams that are wrapping up in the spring here. We also have a winner guard, a world guard last, uh, last weekend, finished twelfth in their division of the world, so that's a remarkable accomplishment to all of them. This weekend, we have our wins that will be competing as well this weekend in W G I, so congratulations to them, and I will pass to the time because I really want to get to our district track meet we're hosting this evening, and also we have wins from all over the United States at the high school tonight, so I'd like to get out there and support both of those groups tonight.
I'll be quick. I just want to say, um, congratulations to Jason, your daughter in the state. That's a phenomenal accomplishment. I know how much hard work. My mom was a cheerleading advisor for a number of years, so I know how much work that the coaches put in, the kids put in, the parents put in, travel. They're one of the hardest working people in the high school.
I wish you would have embarrassed them.
You know, one thing that we're technically known for outside of the academics is our band, our color guard, and our cheerleaders, and it's been that way ever since I've been to school, and that was back in the eighties. So, um, so congratulations to them. Also, um, our staff appreciation from the bus drivers all the way down. That's the core group of what gets our kids to school, secretaries, you know, you name it. Everybody does a lot of work, a lot of work that goes unnoticed, but it's always appreciated. So to all them, congratulations, and I'll pass it on to Jason.
I'll be quick too to get everybody out the door. But quick, Andrew, you and your peers have been doing a dynamite job. They, you really have been, and it's kind of cool to see young people that carry them so well as mature young adults and participate to a conversation. It can be contentious at times, but you know, it's all about collaborating and sharing ideas.
It's worth the admission fee. So good luck to them, and congratulations to the guard for doing, placing twelfth in the world. What does W G I stand for? World Guard International? Okay. All right. Thank you.
I would like to touch base on a banquet I went to last night. I was at the Miami Valley C T C F F A banquet. Learned a lot. This is a new chapter. This is a satellite program that we got going on with Miami Valley C T C. It was a, it was a great experience. The students themselves put on the banquet, and a couple of things that I learned was you really don't have to know much about farming. They're really into trying to build leaders and get you out of your comfort zone, put you in positions to, to be a leader, come out of your shell, be a speaker, you know, all the above, on top of some agricultural things. I hope that continues to grow. It was, it was great. It was a great thing to be a part of last night. Congrats to all of them. Congrats to the Myhamsburg Chair, and if my calendar states correctly, when I left, I think there was twenty-five days left of school the boys got marked, so hang in there for, till the end of the year. That's almost over. Thank you.
I'd like to share my appreciation to the mini-grant committee. I don't think everybody realizes that takes a lot of work. It was so exciting to see all the creative and new ways that our teachers are enhancing our academics. And then, of course, congratulations to Braxton Perry, our district student of the month, and thank you for all the making a difference honorees. Congrats to the middle school cheerleaders. I think we already said that, but how wonderful. I mean, my daughter was a cheerleader, and I was a cheerleader advisor, and it does take a lot of time. It's at your ground's board. And I was with Cory and Ann last night at the F F A banquet, and like Cory, I was so impressed because the entire program was student-led. And then I would also like to thank our entire district staff. Hang in there just a little bit longer. Have a little bit of a break anyway.
This evening, Mark, uh, Mark Twain and Menderview and Bear and Bauer had kindergarten open house for our new incoming kindergarteners and their families, so I want to shout out to those staffs for taking time out of this beautiful April evening to welcome our new families and put that together, so that's exciting. And then tomorrow is our high school prom, the start of all of our end-of-the-year senior and high school activities, which is always a pleasure and a joy, and we're looking forward to graduation on May eighteenth.
Um, I know that's all business downtown, and this week I was so excited to watch our high school students come down and participate in helping to make our downtown a little more fun, a little more welcoming. The students from the high school partnered with the city and partnered with the graphic designers from the city and everything, and they created what's called a blue line, and it is actually a fun, interactive path that stretches from Riverfront Park all the way over to Main Street, then to First Street, then to Second Street. And then people are walking through. It's helping them to explore downtown Myhamsburg. There is a Pac-Man section, there's hopscotch, there's splashes, and all these kids were out on this beautiful day, creating art with their teachers and working with people from the city and the staff, and it was just great to see how well-received and how courteous and wonderful our students are out in the public. So it was, it was just awesome, and it made me think, I thought, I just live in a great community, so I just had to say, that was really cool. And when I grow up, I'm going to be here to go. So you guys have a great evening. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you, Molly. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
All right. First by Mr. Mallory and second by Mr. Daffler. Roll call please.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
All right. We adjourn, and I don't have a watch, but
Seven forty-four.
Seven forty-four. Thank you.